Okay, we're going to go ahead and start and anybody who goes hops on can just hop on. Um, so welcome to round 16 work session. This is our second work session. Let me see if I can get my computer going. All right. So thank you guys for being here. Um, we are excited to have you guys here because your work is super important to Nashville affordable housing success. Uh, today is about collaboration. We want to hear from all of you about what is working and what is not working. So that we can um go into round 16, super strong. Um, today we're going to focus on homeownership projects. Um, there's going to be one more work session later on this week. That's going to focus more on owner occupied rehab. Um, so please, if um you want to be a part of that session and participate in sharing feedback on um that project type, go ahead and make sure you register for that work session. Um, so just to get started, we're going to talk about um the objectives for this work session. It's to create an open forum for grantees and applicants to share experiences, challenges, and recommendations. We want to gather feedback to inform round 16 grant policy and application design. And we want to strengthen collaboration and transparency between the Housing Trust Fund staff and partners. Now, if you were on past work session, you're going to see that the format of all of this is very much the same. Um, but what we want to do is we want to make sure that we're talking about the different um project types when we are in the different work sessions. So I want to make sure that today, um as we're going through the discussions, that we are really focused on homeownership projects. Um, so even though it looks the same, I want to make sure that we are talking specifically about the homeownership project. So if you were on the last work session, you're going to see that the um the questions and the um slides are very much the same. But I want to make sure that we're focusing on a different project type today, which is the homeownership project. Um, so let's start by talking about your experiences navigating previous funding rounds and what worked well and what challenges you faced. Um, so back up a second, we're going to talk about the format and the guidelines. Sorry. Um, so the session itself will be conversation driven with guiding questions and open dialogue. Um, your, all the comments are going to be recorded, um and we're going to um use them for policy development. Um, all feedback is valuable, so focus on constructive ideas and solutions. We want to hear what you have to say. Um, it's really important to us that um we are able to translate that and get that back to um the commissioners as we go into around 16. All right. So part one of our discussion is going to focus on program and process experiences. The goal here is to understand what applicants and grantees found most and least effective in past rounds. Oops. All right. So um part one discussion questions um are going to be what parts of the application process have been most challenging for your organization? Were the application instructions and eligibility criteria clear? If not, what needs more clarification? How could the timeline or review process be improved? Did you feel that um communication during the grant process, um pre-award contracting and reporting was consistent and timely? And how could we better support small or first time applicants and grantees during the application and implementation? This is where I'm going to stop and I'm going to invite you guys to just um give us some feedback on one or more or all of those questions. And we can see who's on here, so you can volunteer or we're going to volunteer you and reach out to you and say, hey, Lucille Hausworth, I'm going to send the request unmute now.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I would like to speak to the question about how could the timeline or review process be improved? Uh, first of all, I think you all do a great job. There obviously were a lot of applications in the most recent round and a lot to work through to get everybody's draw schedule and all of that worked out. I would say that it was quite an elapsed time between when we submitted our application in February to when we got our contract signed and back uh from from the mayor's office, which is when the eligible date for expenses is. And uh, I I think uh helping the uh commission members to kind of understand that might be helpful. There's a lot of focus on um how many rounds you have open and all of that. And I think uh, you know, just additional clarity to the rules and the fact that even if you apply in February, you you really are not uh allowed eligible expenses until you're contracted. In this case, it was in October. So I think just uh increasing everyone's understanding of kind of the process flow uh seems to me to be an opportunity for additional clarity.
Great, thank you Lucille. That's really important. Does anybody else have any feedback they'd like to share? Does anybody have any feedback specifically about the application process as we're getting ready to go into round 16? Um, and taking away the whole Survey Monkey thing, which I think we all don't really like, um, the application process. Um, is there anything that um was really challenging around the application and process itself? Or is there anything that um the applicant, the application process that, you know, was different this time that you appreciated? Um, I think that we have a a lot of um uh grantees that um have talked about wanting us to bring the matrix back, which we are planning to do this round. Does anybody want to talk about that?
Andy, I'm sending the request to unmute now.
Hey y'all, this is Andy Zoo with MFX Ventures. I Great, it did seem. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I think, I think, I know you're on your mobile device. It may be a bad connection. You broke up um after you said this is um Andy with MFX. You broke up a little bit after that point.
Okay, yes, I apologize. I'm on the highway. So do you hear me now? It's good not breaking up?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yes, um hopefully we stay this way. So the application process, I think it would be great to have that matrix as you mentioned. I think one of the things there were some items that were seemed to be very subjective of of how the points and scores were graded, even among the the same project type. Uh, so detailing all of that out a little bit more of making it either more more objective in that or um not to ask you all to take more responsibility on. But if there are the subjective parts, maybe, and then we need to send them for external grading, maybe we we reduce the amount of external grading subjectivity parts. Um, so that those feel a little bit more uh in line and kind of across the board. The other thing that I would mention that I would appreciate, and I don't know if you all have the capacity to do this, is it does feel like it would be helpful to have a cure period um before kind of getting those final grades. Because there's the review period that you do afterwards where, hey, these are the things that we noticed about your application. Um, but but in in many other grant applications, you have a cure period before it goes to final scoring. Uh, and I I think that would be valuable here too for to help most people. Hey, oh, we we submitted this document and maybe the graders or people were kind of unsure how to grade it. And maybe one person said this counts as a financial commitment. One person thinks it doesn't count as a financial commitment, whatever that might be. It it does seem like maybe if the staff could say, hey, these are the things that we think may be questions or maybe concerns in your application before it does go to that grading. Um, do you have any responses or things to clarify that before that happens? I think that would be very valuable.
Thanks, Andy. Appreciate that.
And then next we had Jesse Shaler, um and we're sending the request to unmute now. Oh, wait, I think your hand just went down. Oh, Whitner, yep, sending it now.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with Andy. I'm pro bringing back the matrix. I think it also helps make sense of some things like bonus points too. So I know there was um maybe a bit of a skew with the bonus points compared to the rest of the scoring matrix and for clarity. And then kind of where you were asking just very general application feedback, um if possible, as you know, on the grant side of things. Being able to see all questions at once, I know that's also just an issue with Survey Monkey of having to click through and like to see every single question. That's such a small thing, but I just think that that personally for me makes it so much easier when I can get a snapshot of what it's going to look like. And within the application, the RFA, making sure it's clarity on the request caps. Because I know there's the overall caps, but then often there's um a cap on how much funding you can request for site work or for construction costs. And I think knowing that in the beginning, so you can start budgeting, since I feel like that takes such a bulk of time, would be really helpful too. Thank you.
Jesse. Anybody else before we move on? Awesome. Thanks, guys. That was super helpful. Um, now we're going to shift to talk about how project costs and eligible activities are defined. So the goal in part two of our discussion is to assess clarity and practicality of eligible costs and funding categories. So um part two discussion questions are going to be, have we been clear enough on eligible and ineligible activities? Were there any expenses you expected to be eligible, but they were not? Are current cost documentation requirements manageable? And what additional guidance or templates would help streamline your reporting or reimbursement process? And feel free to, if you have just some feedback, that's not necessarily associated with these specific questions, but around this conversation, to share just some feedback. It doesn't necessarily have to be these questions, but if it's in this genre of conversation, feel free to just share that feedback with us. It doesn't have to be tied to one of these questions. I can pick on somebody.
Jesse, I'm sending the request to unmute.
Thanks, from me again. Um, I think on eligible and ineligible activities, kind of went back to what I was mentioning before. I noticed in the last round, when it came to pre-development slash site preparation, I feel like sometimes that seems, that can be so subjective, and I think each organization looks at it so differently. So more clarity on that, because I feel like seeing it there and then seeing it in the contract looked different. And like I said, I think every organization calls it different things, so that would be helpful. I do really like the newer template that you guys are using for draws. I find it really helpful to know exactly what you need, just more clarity, the better. I'm all for sending all the templates and telling me exactly what to do. If I can get it as clear to you all as possible, I'm willing to do that, because that helps me just know exactly what you guys need.
So as a follow-up to that, would some sort of technical assistance or pre-award workshops that are specific to cost eligibility? Um, would something like that be helpful?
Yeah, I think so, because I remember you um all do offer, I think it was like a like three different ones where we could ask questions about the application process, but I think something more specific on the costs would be helpful. Because I think I remember there being a few questions that came up about that, whereas then to not take up too much time about all of the RFA in general. So, yeah.
Yep. Right. Is anyone else have anything in this area before we move on?
Catherine, if I have, could I have something, actually, I forgot to mention on the last application side. Um, I don't know if you've worked or have talked to OHS about this, but on the application side, the uh, we use a system for called Zoom Grants, I believe. And uh, I actually find that to be a pretty effective software, at least from the grading side. I don't, I haven't made an application in it as an applicant. I'm on the grading side on the OHS committee. But um, just wanted to throw that out there. If you have not talked to them, and maybe there's, I don't know, a bigger discount because one city organization is already paying for it. Just in case you hadn't talked to them, I do really like that software. And I think everyone will probably agree that Survey Monkey is hard to use.
Thank you. We appreciate any like, anything other than Survey Monkey, so I'll definitely pass it on to you and we can look into it. Thank you. All right, so we are going to move into the next um area and it's um implementation and compliance. Um, we know there can be many challenges that emerge once contracts are underway. All right, so um in part three of our discussion, our goal is to identify challenges in post-award phases and compliance documentation. So here, uh, we're going to discuss what the biggest challenges are during contract execution. How could we improve the draw and documentation process? Do you feel confident understanding the audit expectations? And what additional support or training could we offer to make compliance easier to manage? All right, who hasn't talked?
Lucille, I'm sending the request to unmute now.
Uh, well, I've, I've already spoken, but I just wanted to address the question, do we feel confident understanding the audit expectations? Um, we of course have our own extensive policies and procedures here at Habitat, which we follow. And uh, as Jesse pointed out, we follow the procedures related to the submission forms and, you know, all of that sort of thing, trying to get things in on a timely basis. And James, I know you've been on the call and have been working on some sort of a guide or something. But um, even though we've been funded in multiple, multiple rounds, I'm just going to like true, true confession. I would say I don't feel confident understanding the audit expectations from your side. And if they're, you know, documented or uh whatever, um, I I kind of need a refresher. So I'm just going to be honest, since we're among friends.
Yeah, thanks, Lucille. Um, and you can answer as many questions as you want. I'm just going to pick on people who aren't talking, because I want to hear from as many people as we can hear from. Because I know that everybody has their own struggles during um, you know, grant cycles. Uh, so I just kind of want to hear from, from everybody, so everybody gets to talk today. Um, so as far as the audit expectations, I know with round 15, it was a little different because we just kind of started re-implementing um some audit expectations, so it looked a little different. I'm going to say going forward, um, the audit expectations are going to be that um you have to have your annual audit um upfront and it has to be um up to date. I will say also, going forward, when you submit um for an amendment, you have to have an up-to-date annual audit on file with us. Now, if you already have one on file and it's up to date, you don't have to submit it with an amendment. For those of you who currently have um Barnes Grants with us. Um, so just, that's just something to keep in the back of your head for when you're submitting um an amendment. Um, make sure that you have a current audit, a current, uh, a current audit that's up to date with us. Because these are new um standards that um legal and finance are going to have us start following. Um, so know with around 16, you have to have an up-to-date audit and with any amendments that you're going to um be submitting. Go ahead, Lucille.
Oh, I was just going to, thank you for that. And I guess I actually heard that at the, at the last meeting. I was not thinking financial audit. I was thinking Barnes um staff auditing the grantees. So you're talking about the financial audit that needs to be submitted as part of the application. Yeah, we're all set with that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So um that we're talking about the financial audits, your annual audits. And that's because they were a little different for around 15, because we gave the 90 days following if you were um awarded.
Hey, everybody. Can y'all hear me? I'm so sorry to just jump in. I'm having all kinds of technical issues.
We can hear you. Welcome.
Awesome. Well, I would glad everybody's here. I'm so sorry I'm late. Um, I would add to Catherine's, I would, grantees need to stay current on giving matters as well. Yeah.
Definitely. Thanks, Terry. Okay, you got her.
Yeah, the just from Jesse, um, I just saw her comment come through. If possible, to get the DRC at the time of the contract execution, so we can prepare our homeowner education and know our commitments. And then Terry, I am sending the request to unmute now.
I can answer that. Uh, yeah, so we could try to do something like that. The issue we would have is everyone is doing something different, right? So like um, current capacity, that would be a little challenging now, but what we are building out. And once we are fully staffed, we could try to do um, have our DRCs uh closer to the front end. But traditionally, when someone, like we try to um, depending on if it's, if it's homeownership or the different types. Um, actually, staff is currently like working really hard on DRCs and that is a possibility. Um, probably not for round 16, but um it it is a goal that we have set.
And and Terry, did Terry have her hand up, Stephanie?
Yes. Oh, there you go. Yes, thanks. And I uh thank you. I have a question that follows up on the audit expectations. Um, so to understand the audit expectations, but it kind of gets into the what is a small agency question? Because I think the small agency definition is revenue of under $2 million. And um, and so my specific question is, and the, the way we keep our books and in the audit of financials, there's a column that says revenue without donor restrictions. And that is what we use as our revenue, because that is what we, we use in the current year. Uh, there's another column over the far right that says total, and that really includes any grants you get that have restrictions. So for example, um, we might get a large grant from a foundation, but it's not available to us currently. So we could have a lot of lumpiness in our revenue um in total. But the activities that we can use in the current year is kind of the true number. And so we we will want to know in round 16 which column to use. Because we, one could be one answer and the other could be the other answer.
Um, we can, we can meet with you offline and kind of go over that specifically with you, because that's really specific to your organization. Um, but the one, the, the thing that um I just kind of want to drill down on that's specific to everybody who's a Barnes grantee is um, all Barnes grantees are required to have a full audit. Um, and then we can kind of talk to you offline about your situation specifically. But all Barnes grantees are required to have a full audit. You can't turn in a 990 um or anything, anything else. Um, all according to the way it's written, all Barnes grantees have to have a full audit, annual audit. Um, and I can send out the um the specific way it's written, and I can send it out to everybody, so you can see it and see how it's written and why specifically they say everybody has to have a full audit. Um, and then we, we can talk to you about that, Terry, and how it, how it reads and why that is the way it is.
Well, and Catherine, one of the things that it will, I think, apply to everybody. It may only matter if you're kind of close to on the bubble, but all uh not-for-profit agencies, I think, have columns in their audit of financials that say activities without donor restricted, restricted and total. So it's still going to be important to know which column you're using. It never has mattered for us before, but it might, and it could for others as well. Um, and so it it's going to be, you know, what the guidance I've seen just says total revenue. And so I'm not sure, I'm just not sure what column to use.
Yeah, and that might be specific to everybody's specific organization, kind of how that lines up. So um, we can look at that together and and help you figure that one out.
Thank you.
We also Okay, sorry.
Uh, we got a comment from Rashida, and she said we're going regarding the draw process improvement. It would be helpful to be able to upload attachments to some system instead of having to email due to file size issues. And then Casey, I am going to go ahead and unmute or uh send the request to unmute.
Hi, this is Casey with Habitat for Humanity. Um, I just didn't know if this would come up somewhere else, and since James had the, the DRC question had popped up. Um, I I have a, a number of things. Um, I think it starts with regarding that restrictive covenant and what it requires. Um, it, it's kind of taking a, a broader view to say what is truly the philosophy of those covenants. Um, the, the most recent versions, and even looking at the request for applications, um, what was stated in there is that the homes must remain affordable. Um, if you could see me, I'm going to put air quotes around affordable. Uh, it is for a minimum of 30 years, and it says must be affordable again to households at or below 80% AMI. Um, I don't think that I have seen anywhere else where affordable is defined. And so I, I think that leaves a lot of room for a lot of diversity, maybe, maybe on purpose. But um, I think there's a lot of differences in how that is defined just within the realm of under 80%. Does that have anything to do with our housing cost? Um, and that's one, that's one thing in the upfront, um, the initial purchaser, but it's also relevant to the resale. And that's where you really get to the restrictive covenant. Um, where it's, it's very broad and that in some ways is helpful with flexibility. But what it's not is clear to um the homeowners in terms of what's happening, nor is it clear to program managers. And it's also, um, at least in the last RFA, you know, it says that the grantee is responsible for helping identify the next buyer. And there's not a resale formula. Um, maximum sales price is actually referred to in the RFA, but it is not a concept that is defined anywhere that I have seen. So there actually is not a formula for that, and there needs to be more definition if that's an actual concept to be used. In effect, what happens is when someone comes to us to say they want to sell their home, it's very vague as to what to tell them to do about that, other than find a buyer below 80%. Um, and that means pricing that is kind of all over the place. Um, and so I think there's just a, a number of conversations we had that I'm not sure can happen here. But looking at really what the goal of those restrictions is. Um, and whether that goal is being met would be some things I would, I think the commission needs to understand and look into. Um, let me make another note here, but yeah, look at what those, what the philosophy is around that. Um, is it actually happening is a question I have, you know, what's the data that we have on resales? You know, who, from an audit perspective, I know it's not the financial audit, right? But, you know, is anyone following up that those resales are, are happening? And I, in my experience, the And I, in my experience, the restrictive covenant in and of itself is not very strong in the title process for having these be managed. I've had a title company say they were going to look right past it, because it just said it had to be done. And it, so I would recommend that grantees need to have something else in place along with that, a note and deed of trust. We actually reference it in one of our notes, so that it's kind of belt and suspenders, but really is needed to find that. I think there's one other thing. And really, I really have several other comments that I can hold here, but I would just recommend that we consider what the goal is there. And I guess I'd say this across grantees, you know, with the perspective I have, is that affordability is not just pricing, it's financing. And I think I appreciate that in the flexibility and the broadness of the current restrictive covenant that, you know, Habitat does a lot of our affordability through zero percent financing. And I know others, it might be down payment assistance. And with that variability, that does complicate it. But it also leaves a lot of vagueness to the homeowners about what is going to happen in the future. We're even asked to make sure that we have educated them about maximum sales price, but that's not a defined term. So, how can we educate them about something that's not even a thing? So, anyway, focus on that. I would recommend, because it is so super complicated. And if you've ever really gotten into it and you've tried to study, there's a lot of philosophy. It's a lot more art than science. But it does a lot come back to what is the philosophy of the funding body? And I would even recommend that the commission look into bringing in a consultant to help with that process, because it is kind of a beast.
Thanks, Casey. Appreciate your thoughts on that. Rashida, I want to go back to your comment about the draws and them being, sometimes you guys have to send me a lot of information with your draws. I know that that can be a problem sometimes. Some of you that have to send me a lot of information, I know Habitat sends me lots of information with their draws. I know Rashida, you send me a lot of information with your draws. Rashida, I know that you use Dropbox, and that is phenomenal. That's a great way to send me tons of information. So, there are ways to send me things when you have to send me a lot of information. I know Dropbox is one really good way to send me large amounts of information at one time. I don't know if there's a better way that we can facilitate that. But for right now, the ways that you guys are managing to do that are really helpful in order for me to get your bulk information all at one time. So, I'm happy for you guys to give me ideas if there's a better way, if like Dropbox is not working for you, if it's cumbersome for you to use the systems that you're using in order to get me lots of information at one time. But I am getting all of the information that you're sending me when you're using things like Dropbox. So, let me know if there's a different way to do it that's easier for you. But right now, like the ways you guys are using are working for me to receive it. If it's not working for you to send it in that way, just follow up with me in an email or phone call, and we can talk about that. All right.
Hey, Catherine, if I may, real quick, back to Casey about DRCs. I just want to highlight that that is some good information to take back to the team. And I want to let everyone know that we are currently working on our DRCs. We are, Barnes has always tried to take a very flexible approach for you guys. And we understand that that also comes with some unknown, or not unknown, but it may, you may need further guidance. Traditionally, we would, we've always allowed the grantees to add on further things to secure their investment as well as ours. But I just want to highlight and circle back and say that I appreciate that information. And staff is currently sizing that type of project up.
Thanks, James. Yeah, this has all been incredibly valuable. It's great information. It's great feedback. I appreciate everybody who is participating and giving us this information, so that we can use it to make things better and easier for you guys, for us, so we can take it back to the commission when they do their work session later on in the month. Let's wrap up with an open policy discussion and some broader feedback. Here, we're going to gather some ideas and recommendations for around sixteen policy and scoring improvements. Here, we are going to talk about specific policy areas or scoring criteria that you feel need to be updated or clarified. How could this scoring process better reflect project readiness or community impact? What types of technical assistance or pre-application support would be most beneficial? Are there any new trends or challenges in the housing landscape that we should consider as we develop around sixteen policies? And what could the Barnes Fund do to strengthen partnerships and communication throughout the funding cycle? Think back on previous funding cycles and think about anything that was maybe overly burdensome or was unclear. And is there anything that we can, you know, maybe look at making a little bit easier, making more clear, going into this next round and looking at that policies to make them easier on you guys as applicants? Lucille, I'm sending the request to unmute.
Thank you. So, I would like to address the box, are there new trends or challenges in the housing landscape that we should consider as we develop our sixteen policies? You know, we had our first Barnes round here, about the very beginning of the, you know, ten or eleven year cycle it's been, but pretty close to that. And of course, the trends are, you know, increased cost for sure. And also, just the challenges of getting the vendors and all of that to work within all of the constraint that come with grant funding. So, one thing I just wanted to address, and it had come up at one of the meetings, had to do with number of open cycles of Barnes funding and how quickly a grantee would need to draw on their funding to be eligible for the next round and all of that. And I think that gets to what you're talking about in the challenges of the landscape. If you're doing single-family home construction, which is what we're doing, starting with a piece of property, and even if it's properly zoned, right? So, we start with the proper zoning. There are so many phases to that project in terms of readiness and getting the proper approvals and all of that to even get started. If you're putting federal funding on it, you need an environmental review, which takes time. Then you move to the whole site work part that Jessie mentioned, then to the home construction, then to the selling of the homes. And that can be a very long elapsed timeframe, even if nothing goes wrong. So, I just wanted to be certain that the requirements related to being eligible for another round, having multiple open rounds at any one time, is not really a cause for concern as long as they're being drawn on and the process is moving. In our case, we build approximately twenty-six to thirty homes a year, new construction in Davidson County. And so, we have rounds that are just getting open to start on the site work and rounds that are finishing as we're selling the last homes. And if we didn't have multiple rounds of that, we wouldn't be able to produce the volume we do. So, I just wanted to speak to the fact that there'd been some discussion about, well, you know, if you hadn't done this within six months, or you hadn't drawn on your prior round, et cetera, you wouldn't be eligible. I just want to dig down into the reasons that that might be and to explain that in this current environment in which we're working, including needing approvals and grading permits and all of that sort of thing, it can be a long, long process. So, it's not just a matter of a set number of months. It's related to kind of the sequence of all of that, looking at it in its entire context.
Thanks, Lucille. That's really good information. I appreciate that.
We also have a comment from Rashida. Prioritizing applications who serve larger families, especially with homeownership opportunities, might be an important policy clarification or update, in general, providing bonus points of priority for these projects. And then Andrea, I'm sending a request to unmute now.
In order to make a comment, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just found that it wasn't popping up. I was just going to make a comment on looking at kind of the way the funding is kind of being broken up this time around and knowing that we'll likely fall under that owner occupied rehab group, but wondering if it could just be kind of together with homeownership, just so we could maximize the amount of dollars that could be requested. Because I'm afraid that, you know, the thirty percent of what might be allocated just won't be enough to really fulfill a lot of the rehab needs. And they are, tend to be homeownership projects. So, yeah, those considerations.
Thanks, Andrea. Does anybody else have anything before we move on?
Andy, I'm sending that request now.
Okay, I do have a few things on if we're talking points and scoring. So, apologies that I have my thoughts to share. The one thing that I think, both for rental and for these, is that I think long-term affordability is, or maintaining it longer term. This kind of goes to the old DRC point that I think, was it Lucille that you were making? That someone was making about how to preserve these things for the long term and making those more clear and how strong those restrictions are. It may be the case that I know some people say, hey, for homeownership thirty years is what we want to, it doesn't make sense to do more than thirty years. That's not always the case, you know, for community land trust type homeownership programs or shared equity type homeownership programs. Not to say that those are better or worse. It's just that I think there are ways to do it for longer term. But I think maybe regardless of the term on that question, on this DRC question, it's how affordable does it stay, may be the better way to look at it. And for how long? Hard to articulate that right now. But I do think maybe some tweaking in the scoring can be adjusted around that. I would encourage us to get back to looking for these homeownership projects that kind of looking how good the deal is. So, this is my second point. I know a lot of different nonprofits work that I've seen have worked with. You know, sometimes the deal, they have donated land or cheaper land and stuff like that. And that's a very relevant part to being cost-effective with our dollars as a city. And so, I would say that's probably something that may want to be taken back into account. We previously had more scoring related to cost efficiency. Not that that's the end-all, be-all, but, and I know this has been brought up before too, but I think that likely should be back in some sense. It was, it was very, I think, minimized in this last scoring round. Same part on scoring, I think, location points and which parts of town where we're promoting these projects are. I would, there are a couple of different resources to use. I mean, the state has some sort of priority resources. And again, these are around light tech projects mainly. We could base it by income, just at the CSBA level or by, you know, small area fair market rents, even for the homeownership. We could just say, hey, the higher income area parts of town can potentially be prioritized. And the, I don't think that this would necessarily lead to that many more projects being awarded in these locations. But I do think that it's important that we don't try to just do homeownership projects in like, you know, Antioch and Bordeaux, where a lot of them end up happening, because the land is cheaper to start with. So, I do want to say, if we can promote more homeownership opportunities in higher income parts of town, then I think that would be also meaningful. This is a fourth point for me, sorry, is for conversion projects, which are not as relevant, I think, for most homeownership opportunities, but certainly for these cooperatives that we're doing. And if anyone wanted to purchase a apartment building and flip it to condos, and for that kind of homeownership, you mentioned some of the requirements that may be a little bit burdensome. I do think some of the universal design issues for like rehabilitation of buildings is a little bit burdensome, and I may be the only group that has worked with acquisition of existing buildings. But if that, if that does become something that people look at doing, some of those are a lot harder to implement if you're not building it from the ground up, both whether universal design or the energy efficient stuff. So, we may want to consider, hey, if this is an existing asset, that there are a different set of criteria to use for those. The last thing I have, and then I can shut up, is for the cooperative deals. I think I would advocate for potentially a different scoring section for these entirely and having a percentage set aside for those entirely. I do know that there was a lot of heartburn about these projects in the last funding round because of like the amount of bonus points that went to it. I don't necessarily think that's the right way to do it. If, if, for example, like four or five of these cooperative deals would have come to the table and they all scored maximum points on those, then that would have blocked out all of the other homeownership opportunities essentially, because they would have scored higher. I don't think that's the intention of what the city wants to do and the policymakers want to do. But if we kept it the same, I think that would be, that could have been a potential outcome. So, I think that's pretty important to change. But I do want to also highlight that, I think, while these cooperatives aren't maybe the same as traditional homeownership, I think they're a lot better than rental opportunities potentially, because of the equity and everything that can happen going forward. So, if the city had decided last time in policy, hey, these are things we want to prioritize, because they are unique and can provide opportunities of equity that wouldn't traditionally be available to certain income classes of people, then I think the better way to achieve that is to create its own category outside. So, it doesn't have to compete. And if you continue to do the bonus point thing, I think it would, it potentially could crowd out our other homeownership opportunities here. So, that is, that is my laundry list of comments here. Thanks.
Thanks, Andy. We appreciate you. Does anybody else want to add anything before we move on?
We had a comment from Rashida. Additionally, and not related, Metro donated properties donated to NP developers need to have title issues resolved prior to awarding would be helpful. I know you are working on this, the creation of the land bank. Just wanted to have it on record here. And then Terry, I'm sending a request to unmute now.
Thank you. I wanted to build on what Andy just said and also what Andrea said earlier. With a little bit of a different take, because I completely agree that I think the real question for the commission and the city is what do we want to have as a city? So, do we want to have, to the extent, of course, we want more housing, period. But do we want more homeowner housing, both new housing and rehab of existing housing? Or do we want more rentals? And historically, just the way that it has shaped out, we have had more rentals. And the way that the proposed funding allocation was laid out would perpetuate that. So, I guess I just want people to really intentionally think about what do we want? So I guess I just want people to really intentionally think about what do we want? And, uh, kind of go on a step beyond what Andrea was saying as opposed to putting the homeowner and the homeowner rehab together. I would just say if we either put more money towards what we want, whichever one that is, or we don't even do the allocations, just let us all compete together, which is what we have historically done. Because, um, I think if we take what has historically been funded, we're going to get what we've always gotten. And I would just propose, uh, kind of like Andy was saying on how we, or, you know, how the points are awarded. I think we should either award the points based on what the city wants, not what people are applying for. Or we should just let everybody compete together. But I really hope we don't do the funding allocations based on what's historically been funded.
Thanks. Um, this has been a really great discussion. I, I really appreciate all your, all your feedback. All right, let's move forward. So this has all been, um, really insightful and, um, it's really going to be a great way for us to, um, strengthen policy going into round sixteen. So we are going to close out with a summary of next steps. Staff is going to compile and summarize all of this feedback. And the feedback we have from our previous session and our next session that will be later on in this week. And this feedback will be made available to the Housing Trust and Commissioners for their work session, which is on November eighteenth from two thirty to four thirty, and that's being held at the Pruitt Library. The Commissioners' Work Session information can be found on the Barnes page and it was sent out to our distribution list, um, last week. If you didn't receive that, um, please email us and let us know so that, um, we can get that information to you, um, and, um, get you onto our distribution list. The, um, round sixteen priorities, policy and evaluation criteria is going to be discussed at the November, December Housing Trust Fund meeting, which is being held on December ninth. It is our off schedule, um, meeting because of the holiday season. So do not come to a Housing Trust Fund meeting at the end of November because there will not be one. So it will be on December ninth. And if I can get to my last screen, oh, here we go. If you guys think of any additional comments after today, please send your feedback, comments, questions to barnsfund@nashville.com, uh, or nashville.gov. We want all the feedback we can get before we go into making any policy decisions around round sixteen. We, we want to take the lessons we learned from round fifteen into round sixteen. And, um, just have an even better round. We learned a lot. We want to continue to learn and grow, um, with Barnes Fund. We appreciate your time and your honesty and your partnership. Your feedback truly shapes how we improve this process and continue building affordable housing opportunities across Nashville. And we hope you guys have a great day and a great week. Thanks, everybody.